Yeah.
I'd like to call the Flint Board of Education Special Board Meeting to order at 5:10. Board members, as I call your name, please reply present. Board member, Ms. McIntosh.
Right.
Secretary Ramsdale. She needs to be unmuted.
Sorry, Reed, unmuted.
She's unmuted, but she's self muted. Oh, there we go.
Secretary Ramsdale.
Present.
Thank you. Um, trustee Perry.
Can you hear Betty?
Yeah, I can hear you. Okay, yeah, I'm here.
And so at this time, the board will hear any comments from the public. That have joined our meeting remotely are able to submit their questions through the question section or may send an email prior to the meeting. Members of the public are reminded that the Board of Education by its bylaw thirteen seventy are not obligated to answer questions, make statements or commitments in response to issues raised by the public. In general, such issues will be referred to the superintendent for investigation, study or recommendation. At this time, I'll ask Reed if there are any comments from the public. I know it may take a moment for review, so I will pause to give the time for the public to finalize submitting their questions and Reed to advise before we proceed. Reed, do we have any questions from the public?
Will you also unmute Danielle? Danielle joined the pub- the public sec- the public meeting as well.
For President, at this time, there's no questions or comments from the public.
Thank you, Reed. At this time, I seek a motion a second to go into closed session for the purpose of holding administrative hearings as requested by administrators.
So moved.
Second.
Or when I call upon your name, please state I or N. Secretary Ramsdale.
Hi.
Treasurer Green.
Hi.
Trustee Perry.
Hi.
Trustee McIntosh.
Hi.
The board will now go into closed session. If private Zoom meeting invite was emailed to you for each administrative closed session, please close out this webinar and go to the Zoom meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM. The remainder of our meeting will be held in closed session. Please join us at 8:30 for our board committee, the whole session in another webinar invite. Thank you. I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Board Meeting Committee of the whole to order at 8:34. Board members, as I call your name, please reply- reply present for the public record. Vice President Wright.
Present.
Treasurer Green.
Present.
Secretary Ramsdale.
Present.
Trustee McIntosh. Trustee Stroger. Trustee Perry.
Present.
Board members absent one. I did not hear trustee Stroger if anybody else did. Um, at this time, the board will hear any comments from the public. Public members that have joined our meeting remotely are able to submit their questions through the question section or may send an email prior to the meeting. Members of the public are reminded that the Board of Education by its bylaw thirteen seventy are not obligated to answer questions, make statements or commitments in response to issues raised by the public. In general, such issues will be referred to the superintendent for investigation, study or recommendation. At this time, I'll ask Reed if there are any comments from the public. I know it may take a moment for review, so I'll pause to give the time for the public to finalize submitting their questions and Reed to advise before we proceed. Reed.
Yes, Board President, please give me a moment to review the list of questions.
I can't thank you enough for your help. But I feel getting it. And I think I need to go to this iPad and this Chrome pen.
And just so board members are aware, as this is a little bit different of a forum, nobody is muted, so any conversation that you have is being recorded and is public, so don't accidentally say things that you wouldn't want the public to hear you say out in the open. Remember, just pretend we're in church.
At this time, there are no questions from the public.
The community is reminded once again that they may submit their questions by email to FBOE@flintschools.org to have their questions read at the next meeting. Thank you. I now turn the floor over to trustee Perry for the Human Resources Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Okay, I'd like to call the Human Resources Committee of the Whole to order. Mrs. Washington is going to present the action item. We have one action item, one point five personnel recommendations. Mrs. Washington, you have the floor.
Actually, I'm trying to get.
Mrs. Washington on?
No.
If not, I'll do it.
Thank you, Anita.
I think you're approval to move action item one point five to the regular board meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved improperly seconded that we move action item one point five personnel recommendations to the regular board meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty. Is there any discussion?
Um, this will be the if everybody's taking their board packet, this will be part of what we just- the questions will be able to be answered next week in a closed session where we can discuss specifics. To the best of my knowledge, is that correct, Ms. Perry?
Yes, I was requesting a closed session prior to the board meeting to discuss, um, the, um, what number, what number, because I'm, I'm, I've got my scripter front me, I don't have the, um.
One point five.
Yes, ma'am.
One point five.
Yeah, yeah, so I requested through Board President, and we need to have Mrs. Washington, that we have a closed session prior to the meeting next week.
Well, if everybody. Yeah, thank you.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
That was my only question. That was, that was the only thing I wanted to say.
So, are there any other discussion points?
No.
Nope.
Okay, saying no further discussion, the vote is on the motion to move action item one point five personnel recommendations to the regular board meeting. Those in favor, you know what, gotta stop. Well, no, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Okay, the ayes have it, I don't know the numbers.
It's six of you.
Yeah, six zero.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you.
I mean, thank you, Mrs. Stewart. For the whole meeting adjourned, I now turn the floor over to Treasurer Green.
I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for finance. Ms. Sakowski.
All right, good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, great. I seek your approval to move action item eleven point one eight, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty second budget amendment to the regular board meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
It has been properly seconded that we move action item eleven point eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty second budget amendment to the regular board meeting, April fifteenth, twenty twenty. Is there any discussion?
Um. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Because I'm trying, I gotta pull all this stuff up. Um, just a minute, just a minute. Okay, so.
Wait, everybody, I need to make sure that you guys, um, make sure that your screens are muted so that you guys can hear Mrs. Betty or Mrs. Vira.
I can hear Ms. Perry.
Uh, wait a minute, are we, if I nineteen twenty, okay. So are we at negative five million dollars right now in the fund balance?
Correct. We, at the end, right now, the projection is that we will be at negative five million dollars. So I just wanna give you a little bit of information, um, which will maybe help you too. We need to amend our EDA.
I don't know what you're speaking on, because it's, it's, it's real. It's not clear. I don't know if it's your microphone, I don't, or whatever you're speaking on. It's all muffled for me. And is there a way you can sit differently? So I, you know, I just can't understand, that's all.
Mrs. Stewart. Can you turn your volume down a little bit, Mrs. Sakowski?
My volume down? Let me try something else.
Yeah, because I had to take my earphones out of my ears.
Can you hear me now?
That's a little better.
Yeah, that's perfect, yeah.
Okay, all right, I was trying to use her headphone set, but, um, just using my computer now. Yes, so to, to answer that question, Mrs. Perry, uh, right now, we have a budgeted five million dollar deficit. Uh, we need to amend this budget so that the next thing we can do is amend our uh, deficit elimination plan. And we need to do that, so then we can, um, the state will approve the financial stability bond that the community just voted for, uh, in Ma- in March. And once we do that, we will, um, become very close to eliminating most of the deficit for fiscal year twenty. So if we can get the bond prior to June thirtieth, then, um, the, we shouldn't end the year. We might have a slight deficit, but it will, um, be greatly reduced once we are able to get the bond. But to get the bond, we first need to amend the budget and then amend the deficit elimination plan.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask this question. Um, how soon are we going to get the money, though?
Uh, did you say, how soon are we going to get the money?
Yeah.
Right, so the hope is that we do get the bond, um, before June thirtieth, so before the fiscal year ends. Um, so this, again, is the first step. We're gonna have to meet again in April to amend the deficit elimination plan once we put in the, um, financial stability bond and we take out the energy bond that's currently in there because we did pass a sinking fund also. So those two things, uh, if you remember the kind of the scenarios when we had the EDA, there were many scenarios. Um, so those two things happened, so now we're gonna be able to amend that, that deficit elimination plan. And, um, and if we can get that done this month, then we should be on track to get the financial stability bond before June thirtieth, which, like I said, will be real close to, um, being out of a deficit at that time.
Okay. Okay. Okay, okay, that's all for me.
Stroger.
You're muted, Blake. Blake, you're muted.
There we go. Can you now? Okay. Um, just a quick question, uh, kinda goes in line with, uh, uh, Board Member Perry's question. Um, so the state knows that we're gonna be in deficit for this time of going in, right?
This, I'm sorry, the state knows we're going to be in deficit, what?
That the, the, uh, the state recognizes that we're gonna encounter a deficit going forward, right?
We will until we get the financial stability bond, and then we should be, like I said, we'll be real close to either eliminating that or have a very small deficit after we get that bond. So it's gonna greatly change our financial picture. What we're trying to capture, what I'm trying to capture here with the amendment is, um, uh, the membership, our student count, because when we did it back in, in September, we had four thousand, we were budgeting. So we are now using the actual, we thought we were gonna receive some additional eleven S dollars, um, that we did not get, but we've received a lot more in other grants. So just kind of capturing more of a realistic picture. And as of right now, every, um, district employee, I have budgeted that they receive payroll throughout the end of the year. All our teachers, our paras, all of our district staff will remain on payroll with the budget that I presented.
Thank you.
Hey, Blake, I'm getting messages saying, who got a baby?
Miss Green.
Yes, any more questions? I'm sorry, I gotta quit, sorry. Any more questions?
Yes. Ms. Green, so, um, Ms. Sakowski, so you said that this would eliminate the deficit within how many years?
We will be real close at the end of this year. We're still working out the exact, um, numbers of how the bond. You know, we have some obligations of what we're paying, uh, we have to pay off the PNC loan, uh, we're gonna pay off the TAN. So we have, uh, once we get those numbers finalized, which you will see when we present the amended EDA, we'll be able to, so if we're not at a deficit this year, it's going to be real close in the next year. Year, I think year at the, at the very most, so it's gonna be real close. Um, I, I think we're gonna be real close to being out of that deficit this year because of this bond.
So just for clarification, the, uh, the conversations that we were having based around school closures, based around all of those things, and the deficit being the sixteen year process, if we did nothing, things of that nature. So we've basically shifted the way that we did business, shifted operation, as well as with the fiscal stability bond, eliminated what, that deficit that would have been between five and sixteen years down to a year and a half-ish.
Correct. That's to get us out of the deficit, but so, you know, other decisions, other things still need to continue to happen, and, and obviously, we have to be very frugal and mindful of how we're spending our dollars so that we don't incur a deficit next year. We're, we're gonna
For sure.
to make it out, but we're gonna have to make changes so that we continue to stay positive. I'm sorry.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right, yeah.
Is there any more questions, guys? No? Uh, I'm. Mrs. Wright. Yeah, um, go- going off of something that Ms. Sakowski just said, you know, I, I requested, um, at least two meetings ago, that we do a resolution to, um, curtail spending unless it's absolutely necessary to avoid possibly going into, um, any unnecessary debt, and, um, I have yet to have that brought forth. Because I think that's critical, and it's important for the community to see that we are being mindful about not going backwards in terms of our finances, so my request still stands that we do a resolution that curtails any and all unnecessary spent expenditures.
And Mrs. Wright, we had talked about that, um, a, a couple of meetings ago, and we decided that it needed to go through the finance subcommittee and then to the governance committee.
Right, oh, yeah. Oh, and that would be me again, wouldn't it? Okay, I take that back.
So we can, um, if you're interested, schedule a financial, um, a finance committee meeting, if, if you're interested in doing that, um, you know, remotely, I wasn't sure if we were gonna try to wait to see if, you know, we could meet in person, but if you're interested in doing that remotely, we can get that set up in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think we need to go ahead and do that because it's not something we need to wait on.
I agree. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Carrie, did you have something?
No.
Okay. That, Ms. Ramsdale, would you like to say something?
Um, I'm in here, Ms. Rams.
We can't hear, we can't hear you, Betty, you gotta unmute yourself.
Betty, you still didn't unmute yourself. Betty, you have to press a button to unmute yourself.
Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now we can hear you loud and clear.
Sorry, but I think sometimes somebody sneaks in there and mutes me. I'm sorry, but I, that's, no. Anyway, I think to say something to the community and to make that resolve public and then to live up to it is just, yeah, just, it's right came to.
I agree.
Pierre, did you have something you wanted to say? No, okay. Then, no, no further discussion. The vote is on the motion to move action item eleven point fifteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty second amendment to the regular board meeting. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All say nay. Motion carries six zero. Ms. Sakowski.
Uh, Blake is back, so I think it's actually seven zero now.
That is correct.
Thank you.
We got a aye from you, Blake?
That's a aye.
Okay, zero.
Okay, I seek your approval to move action item eleven point one nine, food service contract addendum, letter of agreement to the regular board meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we move action item eleven point nineteen, food service contract addendum, letter to, of agreement to the regular board meeting, April fifteenth, twenty twenty. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Perry.
Nah, I got a question too.
Okay.
Why was the board never informed about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar late fee to, uh, to SEDEXO? Uh, yes, I'll start there, I've got two questions.
Sure, um, I'll just give you my, uh, background with this. When I, uh, you know, took over the business office from Raymond, uh, we started receiving a monthly statement indicating that we had these late fees. Um, when I asked, um, inquired about those, um, their response was that they had never, they had never seen those, they had never been charged that. Um, so unfortunately, you know, I've just been left, um, to try to figure out what the late fees are. We've had meetings with SEDEXO to see if they would, you know, work with us on the late fees, because obviously, that's a large amount of money. Um, the late fees go back to two thousand and fourteen and, um, have been accumulating ever since, so that's pretty much where it just kinda landed in my lap, and we've been trying to figure out a way to resolve that and to bring that to you.
Okay. Um, something like this, any of our, you know, I believe the funds should be given to the board way before we get to, to this point of a letter of agreement. Be knowing about this, uh, early on, find out, find out, okay?
Okay.
But what does that two million dollars mean? What is that?
Okay, sure, let me explain that. In the contract that you signed with SEDEXO, there is, um, a two hundred thousand dollar guarantee return of funds, so, um, if you will, it's kind of a, a profit, a two hundred thousand dollar profit from the revenues we receive from cleaning the meals and the charges that SEDEXO charges, uh, Flint Community Schools. They guarantee at the end of the fiscal year, we will have a profit of two hundred thousand dollars. And that profit is, that's important. Um, your food service fund has always, um, you know, been in the positive, has always made money, and those, those funds are generally used to, um, purchase new equipment, because that would not be something SEDEXO would be responsible for. Um, the, the, uh, fund balance that you had built up over many years, that is how you were able to move Central Kitchen over to the Northwestern High School, we were able to use those funds, so it's just part of the contract, they guarantee that they can do the job and ensure that we will rehab two hundred thousand dollars in our fund balance at the end of the year.
So we just given up, we, we lost that two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, in this, yeah, just for the, just for the one year, um, because we owe them two hundred and forty, so we, um, obviously come out a little bit ahead if we take this, um, guarantee, if we, you know, waive the guarantee just for this fiscal year, uh, we will get the guarantee again for next fiscal year, um, but it'll take care of the late fees that we currently have with SEDEXO.
So are we doing better, or are we going better paying SEDEXO?
Oh, absolutely. There are several things that I've done. One of the things, um, Raymond did was combine general fund um, and food service bank accounts, um, which I, I've stopped that practice. And, um, so food service funds are completely separated, and we, uh, have obviously been paying them timely ever since, you know, I have taken over and have been able to clean up, clean up what I was left from Raymond.
Okay. I think this is a torture. Torturer.
I'm sorry.
Ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Um, we need to, uh, we need to, and I, when I say we, I'm talking about the board. We need to keep a better eye on that, on that, this, this is bad, two hundred and forty thousand dollars late fee. And so if you are, and getting information or not getting information, please bring it to us, because it should never occur to us at, at the minimum, four thousand dollars.
I, I can't.
Hello? Hello?
I, I, I heard you saying something, Ms. Perry, but I wasn't quite sure. I, I, I think I got the gist of what you were saying. And when I talked to Carrie about this, because her had a conversation, um, it's nothing that she's seen or I've seen. So, uh, we did talk about moving forward and, you know, keeping track of that and to make sure all the board members get the check run, like, like I sent it to you guys last time, I'll continue to send it. And I agree that we, um, need to be updated as soon as this information was found out. I agree with that one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright.
You know, actually, Mrs. Perry asked the question that I was going to ask about if we are doing better, doing better at this time, so you can go ahead to the next person.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wright. Mr. Stroger.
You're muted, Blake.
There we go. Uh, this may have something to do with the comment that came in through, uh, Treasurer Green, uh, the other day, um, with just, uh, their performance. Have we been monitoring, uh, just trying to keep an eye, have we been monitoring their performance in the past couple of weeks, months, since their last contract extension?
Are you referencing SEDEXO?
Yes.
Um, yeah, yeah, we definitely monitor what they, you know, we work with them and monitor how they're performing. I, are you asking financially or just overall in the program?
Overall, their programming and in their, and, and in their, uh, output. Some board members receive comments from them. Uh, I, I know that it's too premature to say, let us go and look at another company, but, um, every time, you know, previously before, we were always um, every time, you know, previously before, we were always looking to, when we would look into re, renewing or adjusting contracts, we look into their performance and how they had done previously, uh, to make sure that we were getting what we were paying for. So just, just way to monitor it.
And really, the only piece that I can speak on would be the financials and, uh, you know, that part of it. I don't personally oversee food service.
Right.
Um, so I, I have not heard of any issues or concerns, um, you know, but I, I really only work on the financial part of food service for our name vendors, yeah. And I would just like to say too, that, uh, we are being very mindful, um, to not incur any late fees, um, and to pay very timely to our vendors. Uh, we were, uh, what we found, we were incurring a lot of late fees with consumers, um, water, um, other vendors, and we've just been really mindful of that to ensure that, I mean, that, to me, that's just wasted dollars. And, um, we've made changes and we stay on top of it. I am sending out the check register monthly, so you will, you can see that that's being paid, um, and, and that our bills are being paid in a very timely fashion. So, you know, we do, we have make a lot, we have made a lot of, um, proactive steps in our department to ensure that vendors are paid in a reasonable time frame.
So, um, Board Member Stroger, what I, what I think I hear you speaking of is just overall, overall quality of service for Sedexo? Is, is that what I, is that what I, what I hear that your request is? Just overall quality of service, quality of food, uh, timeliness of getting the food out? Is that what I, is that what I hear you saying?
Yes, I know that, uh, Mrs. Sakowski couldn't give me, uh, some of those dynamics.
Yeah.
Uh, but I was hoping that we could, at least might be able to get an update on that. I know that, um, when it was brought to our attention the other day by, you know, Treasurer Green, uh, it was a concern, not only a concern, but just, it was floated that we at least should get an update on how they're doing with, uh, but, well, before we went to this pandemic, how they were doing with their output, as well as how they were doing with just, uh, the, uh, stuff they put out there for our students. So just, just seeing how, uh, how they're doing, basically, is just my question.
Awesome.
And, and.
We can think through that, um. I'm sorry. We can think through that. I just wanted us to keep into mind, keep in mind that it is going to look a little different since the pandemic, but.
Absolutely.
We can think through what that, what that looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Green?
Mr. Lester?
Yeah, um, and so just, so we're aware, so the, while the financial piece is everything, Ms. Sakowski, the actual operational piece would be handled through Rachel, correct?
Through the superintendent and Rachel.
Okay, okay, perfect, just so we know who to kinda follow up with when that, like, with that information.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion? Ms. Ramsdale, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I just think it, it's, it's so good to have somebody in financial that's actually doing the job, you know? Um, I think Carrie's done more for us than the whole Raymond group did altogether, so that's just my thought.
Great, thank you. Um, Ms. McIntosh?
Yeah, I may agree with Ms. Ramsdale, it don't hurt to have somebody in house committed. Um, far as the meals go, and, um, I understand what Assistant Superintendent is saying about it's gonna be a little different because of a pandemic situation. I'm sure they probably have to go to something that's a little more non-perishable. You know, and stuff, you know, things of that nature, it's a little different when you're sending it out versus when somebody's eating in. Um, once we find that out, if we are not sticking with our standard menu, can we look to see if there's a price adjustment that may be able to be made? If, you know, the schedule for meals has been changed, then could it possibly be do a reduction in pricing or something, or because of the pandemic, are we locked into that? I was just wondering how that may, uh, work.
We can look into that and provide more information to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any more discussion? There no discussion. The vote is on the motion to move action item 11.19, food service contract addendum, letter of agreement to the regular board meeting. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, and then I just have, um, just for information, um, there's been a slate, the master clocks that were recently voted on last month. Um, there, there was a small shipping charge that was left off the original, uh, board resolution and we just wanted to make you aware that that has increased slightly.
How much?
How much increase? Um, I'm sorry, let me pull it up.
Forty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
Oh, I think you're late. Thank you.
Is there any more questions?
Nope.
Ms. McIntosh?
No, thank you.
Um, Ms. Ramsdale?
No, thank you.
Mr. Stroger?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Mrs. Wright?
No questions.
Mr. Lester?
I am all set, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Sakowski. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Um, there no further action. I declare the finance committee of the whole meeting adjourned. I now turn it over to President Lester.
Before I adjourn the meeting, do any board members have any comments? Okay, I, so, Ms. Perry, I know I can't see you. Have you, were you chiming in?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, I, before we close out, I just wanna say that I really, really appreciate the effort of the administration team, of all of our partners, of the board, um, uh, uh, of our district completely, our community and everybody around us who have really wrapped their arms around this pandemic, or wrapped their arms around our, our city during this pandemic to do everything that we can for everybody and, um, adjusting to the new normal while not easy, uh, is, is something that I, I think we're doing better than, than some of our peers. So I just wanna say thank you very much for all the hard work and time and effort everybody's putting in. Um, so seeing no further action, I declare this board committee of the whole meeting adjourned. And hit the gavel.
Aye.